Would have carried anything else that old because it was.
Cut, timeout.
No, it's okay. It's seven o'clock. You're signing on time tonight for the record? Um, it's a.
I think I noted that by then.
Okay. Being the first of the month, we'll uh, go ahead and kick it off this first, this month on time. I'm gonna start off with old business. And we have some minutes, gentlemen. Seven o'clock.
I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of January twenty fifth as amended.
Oh, no second thought.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor approving the regular minutes of January twenty fifth? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll do the six thirty non-public if you'd like. I'll make a motion that we approve the six thirty non-public meeting minutes of January twenty fifth.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Seventeen minutes.
Is that the clock? You have six, this is a six thirty.
Over earlier than that.
So let's have to do it that way.
The six minutes.
And then why wasn't it the non-public? I decided that way.
And then we have one more seven minutes. Those non-public on uh, for eight oh one P M.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the non-public, the eight oh one non-public minutes. For January twenty fifth.
Do I have a second Dave?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on those?
No.
Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, minutes are done.
Yeah, that was a non-public, correct?
That was eight oh one, correct. On the January twenty fifth. Which is announced for the record, uh, all three segment of present town minister, recorded secretary and Leo Martell for the record is reported. Thank, good evening Leo. Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment. And uh, we'll start on the side. Sir, do you have anything for public comment? Uh, you're on the agenda, I believe.
Uh, yep, I'm on the agenda that uh, on recent.
Okay.
All I wanted to know was, I know I said, if you had a chance to look at the release?
Yes, uh, yes, we did. It's distributed to the, in the mailbox. It's in our package tonight.
Okay.
What we're doing, are gonna do is we're gonna look at it. We're not legal people. We're gonna get our town attorney, take a can, take a little glance at it and gives us a thumbs up. And as soon as it, we get a thumbs up, it's gonna be immediately shot back to you if it's approved. Okay?
Okay. You got it. That's it.
Yep, no, we're, we're good with that. Okay.
It's in your packet?
It's a, it's a release.
The very last sheet.
Oh, okay. It's a release?
Yeah, and it's uh, for some of the work that the circle awareness uh, committee is working on.
Okay.
And uh, they're taking videos and they wanted to make sure we had a legal release to relieve the town of any liability that may incur with that legal tape.
Did the whole board look at that? I don't know.
But it's, they have copies for it. But I think it's, but before we uh, make any decision on it, we want to get a, is our town attorney for?
No problem.
Okay.
No, it did not.
She's, she's upset.
Well, that goes, that's the mailbox, don't worry.
Yeah, that's mailbox.
That'd be signing on the mailbox.
Okay, wait, any public comment? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. And uh, we're gonna start right down the agenda and we're gonna get school board.
So if we wait five minutes, Jeff forgot a poster he wanted.
We can do that.
We can read this here for one.
That's fine, well, not a problem.
Do you wanna jump through and do the rest?
Yeah, that's, you read my mind, Bob.
I don't know any problem with the release.
Exactly. It's simplistic and well worded.
We can't get, get around here a little bit.
Okay, we're gonna jump the agenda. We're gonna accept uh, uh, some money. Uh, do you have money, sir?
Oh, well, yes, I've already given it to lean.
Okay.
And.
We're gonna make a motion on your behalf.
I'll make a motion per RSA thirty one colon ninety five dash B three B to accept a total of four hundred and forty five dollars for the rese across done by, from Don Larson.
And I'll second your motion.
And uh, I'm gonna open up the discussion and I'm gonna invite you to discussion on this amount.
Basically, last year, we were able to raise uh, forty six hundred and twenty three dollars and thirty cents, and that's includes thirteen cents of interest. Great job. We ended up, the end of the year after expenses nineteen hundred and thirty six dollars and forty five cents. And uh, I've added two corporate sponsors, Fire Pro, uh, Stash and Alita. And also Grand State Communications. So we begin the year with fifteen hundred and seventy five dollars toward next year. And we'll just keep building the fund and then private donations and everything else. We're gonna have uh, the wreath uh, placement on Saturday, the eighth of December. Hopefully, there won't be so much snow on the ground. And that, and uh, that way we'll stand out and we'll probably get better press coverage also.
Yeah, we'll pencil that day in.
Yeah. And uh, we'll probably start the day off and we'll do it at ten A M. rather than nine A M. So more people can attend. And uh, we'll have banners and uh, we'll be at the uh, uh, school board meeting and the town meeting. And uh, of course, uh, hearts on the common and during the year, all the ma- major events here in town. You know, to, so people can donate. We'll have uh, cards made so that if you wanna give somebody a birthday present by giving them, making a donation in their name, we'll have those available. So there's a lot of things we're doing to, you know, to get the kitty built up so it'll go on forever. It took us uh, with a hundred and eighty two wreaths and all the volunteers, probably an hour and change to put all the wreaths on, on that Saturday morning. So everybody was pretty much done by ten A M.
Very good.
Great.
So, worked out real well. Hopefully, we'll even have more participation this year.
Excellent. All in favor of accept the money, gentlemen?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's been accepted. Thank you, David. You're creating almost an indemnity, indemnity for that. Endemic, shoot, that's the word. That's great. Okay, uh. Yeah, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do one more thing. I can uh, bounce around a little bit. We'll use the time effectively. This was a, I'm gonna go right to a few items out of the mailbox. This was one of them. It was a Department of Environmental Services. It just talks about repairs to the uh, the, the fire dam over in Flintlock Estates. What action do we need to take with this one?
Nothing at all. It's an F Y I. It has been copied to the road agent. I believe the forms changed because he did submit a, a form and attached to his form was a, a new sheet that said, had a sticky on it, said he had to fill out that second sheet where it complied.
Okay.
Did I put a dedication sheet in there?
No, you did not.
I'm gonna put that up while you go through the rest.
Okay. Okay, second item? We're gonna just do one, catch your breath, we'll do one other. I'm gonna go in round order to keep things moving on. We got a little note from the public library today. Uh, Dave Reed.
Dear Dunbar Select, Lane and Allison. Library staff and trustees wish to thank you all for the loan of the beautiful twenty fifteen anniversary quilt. Thanks to Mike Shamsky for all of their assistance giving over and up on our wall. The quilt looks fabulous. It has only been one and a half hours as of this writing, but everyone has noticed it and given it two thumbs up. Thank you again. We'll take great care of it. Best, Mary Drive, Dunbar Public Library.
That was uh.
It has a smiley face on it.
That was an action we, we can say it's been completed and uh, I think already it's getting a little more uh, public viewing of it. So, good job, gentlemen.
Glad you took the time to do it. And if you have the extra time, those pictures of the cemetery go on that wall.
Come on, did we tell you we didn't accept your wife's resignation?
So noted, okay. Alright, now, I'm gonna go back out of order. We'll pull up and send to the other town business. And we're gonna give uh, the school board the floor. Gentlemen, your honor.
Thank you. Gentlemen, appreciate you entertaining and letting us entertain you tonight. Reason we're here tonight is just to give you a brief summary of what the heck is going on with our project over there at the school. Now, you folks tend to talk to different people than we talk to, and so if we all have sort of the same information, that would be great. And uh, so this is just to bring up the speed really briefly. We will have a very detailed presentation at our bond hearing next Wednesday. I don't know if you folks can come.
The bond hearing is Wednesday?
Wednesday, starting at six o'clock.
Wednesday? Six P M. Monday.
And uh, we'll have more detailed presentation then, but we wanna give you at least a brief one now and let you folks ask questions if you have any at this point. So I'm gonna start off with Clem. I'm just gonna talk about our goals.
Yep, our uh, so the bond project, the scope or the main goals we're trying to accomplish are four specific goals. One is to upgrade the aging building infrastructure. The second is to add one classroom so that we can provide all-day kindergarten for our uh, kindergarten class, which currently we only have a half-day kindergarten. Third would be to add space for changing, uh, for the changing needs for our office staff and our students. You know, we have a different educational services that we provide that need more room. Um, and then the fourth would be to enhance security at the main entry. So regarding the first goal about the uh, aging infrastructure, we, in the fall of two thousand sixteen, the capital improvements committee hired an onsite insight, which is a, they do assessments of facilities. And they um, did a pretty comprehensive report of the building. They identified uh, over fifty different aspects of the building and identified the uh, expected useful life and a lot of information was made from that. We came up with a list of approximately fourteen items that we thought were critical in those systems. And uh, so we made those a priority and we uh, presented that to the district last spring as things that we thought would be important. And those include uh, renovations or replacements of the roofing, the siding, the windows, the heating and ventilation systems, the kitchen, the toilets. In two areas uh, down by the community center and also up by the uh, uh, what do you call that? Just the new.
Upper grade wing.
The upper grade wing. Uh, we need new digital heating and ventilation controls because ours are no longer supported. Uh, we believe we need a new boiler because that is reaching the end and we don't wanna have that be catastrophic failure. And we also looked at the septic systems, but those were determined to be fine. So um, that capital need assessment is available on the school district's website.
What part was fine?
The septic system. We had somebody go out and dig some pits and they're, yeah, we also, we pump those tanks every year, so they're, that whole system is fine. So that's not work that needs to be done luckily. But that um, that report is on the website and it's available for everyone to see and it, it has a lot of information. And that helped us develop an initial budget and scope of work that we wanted to address going forward. The second one, adding the all-day kindergarten or, or adding a classroom for the all-day kindergarten. Uh, that started back in two thousand fifteen when the school board appointed a committee to uh, study all-day kindergarten and its relative benefits and costs. So uh, the, that committee determined that all-day kindergarten, uh, and its more rigorous instruction of math, reading and writing, social studies, science, technology and music had long-lasting benefits for students. Uh, for all students, but particularly for the at-risk students. It, it found that um, you know, if you address these things earlier on, you can save time and effort further down the road with students that have a disadvantage or disability. It allows them to uh, uh, acclimate quicker into a, into the district. So the costs were determined to be the expense of building the addition and any, the ongoing annual cost of around a hundred and three thousand dollars at a time, which would account for um, you know, staff and that kind of uh, uh, the, and the paralegal, the teacher and the paralegal. Uh, some of that money would be recaptured through uh, state aid because if we have a full-time s- uh, student, then we get full-time compensation for it. Uh, the governor this year signed in a bill, I think, which would give twenty nine hundred dollars per kindergarten student. For all-day kindergarten students as opposed to the eighteen hundred now that we get. So there would be an increase in revenue, revenue on that side of it. Um, if Keno goes as successfully as people think, that has the opportunity to go up to a full funding, which is approximately thirty eight hundred dollars. Thirty-six hundred dollars. So uh, and that, that committee came up with a final recommendation of the school board that um, that they thought the district should provide all-day kindergarten for the students. And so, the voters approved uh, at that meeting in two thousand sixteen, a conditional all-day kindergarten based on the availability of space. So that next year, we had space for it. The year after, we hadn't. That's this year. We would like to be able to provide that. That's why we'd like to put on the classroom edition.
How have your, how have your numbers of students changed? I know that there was a high number of kids looking to go there and then when they did have a day, that dropped substantially.
Yeah, so.
Is there a chance it's gonna come back up, you think, or?
We, if we add all-day kindergarten next year, we would have thirty-one students register. At this, right now, we have thirty-one students that would register for all-day kindergarten. That would probably drop down to ten or twelve.
We generally get about half, maybe, that come for half-day kindergarten.
Yeah, it doesn't make, make a lot of sense to try and pick up half-day if you're working parents.
It's really hard for, exactly, working parents to make that midday transition of their kids. So, a lot of kids who choose not to come for half-day kindergarten, try to go for full-day kindergarten someplace else. Some don't get any kindergarten at all. They just, you know, Nana watches them during the day. So you get kids coming into first grade with a wide range of kindergarten experiences or no experience. And that's what makes it tough for first-grade teachers to get these kids all
Yeah, but there's a lot of benefits to all-day kindergarten. One is that the kids are ready to hit the ground in first grade as opposed to playing catch-up.
So the need is here and it almost goes away when you're half, half-day.
Right?
Alright, so regarding the goal number three, which is to add space for the changing needs in the growing school. Currently, we have a staff of fifty-one employees there, which includes thirteen students, or thirteen teachers at D E S. The last time we had significant space for work areas was in nineteen eighty-nine when we had twenty-two staff, which included seven teachers. So, you know, as our population grows, so does our teaching staff and our professional staff. And right now, our small instructional spaces used by specialists and special education personnel are overcrowded and too cramped. We have staff with desks in the hallways. We have staff that have their desk at the teacher's break table. We have staff that are um, you know, in storage closets and making those into small instructional areas. We have storage areas that have been turned into timeout spaces and teacher workstations. So we've lost our storage and now we've got a situation where we need to provide a better place, especially in regard to our instructional services, which is both for regular ed and for special ed. There's a lot of um, small instruction that goes on with groups, groups like reading specialists or math specialists or speech or occupational therapy. There is a, you know, education is very um, involved in the services we're obligated to provide are uh, very comprehensive. And so we are at a point where we need more room for that.
There's, there're big cost savings when you keep special ed in-house.
Yeah, if we, if we weren't perhaps, uh, you know, compelled to somebody off-site, could, could run aside, it's a hundred thousand dollars a year per student or two hundred thousand. I mean, it it all depends where they go. But if somebody went to Crotchet Mountain, that can get very, very high. So we, yes, we like to keep people in-house because we think it's better educationally, but it's also better for the budget.
You do know, I saw that firsthand when Don and Don were doing a, um, doing a project for the students. I did see the special ed teachers on the floor in the spare spaces trying to teach, so. It was a, it was an eye-opener to see.
It's tight. I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty um, I mean, we, doing the best we can and the teachers are doing everything they need to do, but we're at a time where we need to uh, improve those conditions. So um, in that, part of that project would be to uh, create those spaces by cutting up two existing classrooms, which would give us, you know, plenty of room for occupational therapy, plenty of room for speech, small breakout areas or reading things. We can move our stacks, which are currently uh, not allowed by Fireco. We have stacks of books in the hallway that shouldn't be there because there's too much combustible material. Those would get out of the egress into an area where they would be accessible to, to teachers and students alike, but not in the problem area. And uh, a lot of these problems would be solved going forward. Um, and then our teachers and staff would actually have a uh, yeah, work, workable spaces and desks where they need them. And then the final thing, the final goal that we have, and there, I mean, there's a lot more to this. And obviously, when we go over at the bond hearing, there's gonna be so much detail, you guys might fall asleep. But we would welcome you to come. Just don't snore too loudly. But the final thing that we uh, have is the enhanced security at the entryway. Back in two thousand fourteen, the New Hampshire Department of Safety, the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management did an assessment which highlighted concerns, you know, throughout the building, but one of their areas was the entryway. And everyone knows uh, the recent cases where there are people that go into schools. Part of that, you know, part of our changes there is to try, try and control access at that spot. So one of their big concerns was that there's nobody to, we have cameras and we have voice and there's a buzzer system, but there's no way to visually challenge somebody when they come in. There's no window. So one of their recommendations was to provide a window where the office staff can visually see who's coming in there. Make sure nobody's quote-unquote tailgating their way through into the building thereby, you know, providing a more secure entry. I mean, there's also other uh, things. I think, am I missing anything, Jeff?
No, that's, that's, I mean, they, they highlight a bunch of other things. Lock all your doors during the day. Uh, maybe put your room numbers on the windows so the fu- so the emergency responders on the outside know which room is which room. There's a lot of different things like that that we've been able to. But the key thing was secure enough for an entry. Have a place where our office staff can visually see who's coming in and out, not just who's standing in front of the camera at the moment when we hit the buzzer.
So I think, I mean, that's kind of the mile-high look for those four goals that we have as a district in this project. Jeff is going to, you know, Mr. Numbers is gonna hit all the fun stuff.
Numbers are my friends. Um, so, based on these goals, the school board assigned to the capital improvements committee, which kind of put fun on our local committee, come up with a plan so that we can plan for these needs in a timely and cost-effective manner. And so that we can also plan for a relatively steady and predictable capital budget. Between ten and twenty years ago, we were spending on average about twenty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars a year on our capital budget, which includes bond payments, deposits in the capital reserve and any money we appropriate at the district meeting for capital purposes. In the last ten years, that's dropped to a hundred thousand per year. So we've really cut back on our capital spending and it's showing. We now have all these things coming at us very quickly. We need to step up our capital budget. But we don't want our capital budget to be doing this every year. It's hard enough because our operating budget does that every year. That, if you get out of sync, it can really make things difficult. So we wanna reasonably level and steady and predictable capital budget. Last year, we came up, we looked at a lot of different ways to implement the thirteen items on that capital improvements list last year. We were, we were going with the Plan H or I or something like that. But we settled in on Plan G. And Plan G was come back to the voters in two thousand eighteen, this year, with a, a construction project to accomplish all the work. One season, one job, one project, and funded primarily with bond. We looked at perhaps trying to stage the project in multiple years, six years, eight years, every other year do something kind of thing, and try to feed money into capital reserve each year. The problem is inflation in our construction industry is going up at four to five percent per year, right now. Bond rates are hanging in at two to an half percent. So it makes more sense to borrow the money, do it now. It'd be cheaper than if we tried to do a little bit this year, two years, do a little bit more, but inflation has taken over four years, even more, more inflation. So economically, it made more sense to do it all in one big project. You save money because we can scale. Every time you have to mobilize for a project, it costs you money. So doing it all at once will, will give us a better guide. So, uh, we had two warrant articles last year. Um, and one of them was to put two hundred and forty thousand dollars in our capital reserve to step up our, our capital budget, get on the bus, if you will. Uh, and to build up our savings in anticipation of this year's bond. Uh, the other one was to withdraw up to a hundred thousand from capital reserve to fund the cost for design and construction services to get this project designed and to have bids and so forth to bring to the voters. So we did that over the summer. And in the fall, uh, we hired Warren Street Architects from Concord. Uh, Kyle Barker, who has extensive experience with uh, school design. They're using W V engineering as their mechanical, electrical and plumbing consultant, who has done all of our mechanical renovations in the past, so they know our systems are very well. We also hired uh, Bowlin Corporation as our construction man, a construction manager works with us during the design phase. They sit at the table with us. They bring their construction expertise and their pricing ability. So while we're making decisions during design about which way we go, we have their input, so we can make smarter decisions. So they were involved. Um, and uh, I'll talk about bidding and everything later, but let me talk about the plan that we have come up with. I suppose, right there. And I'm gonna stand up here and just kind of point at a few things. So initially, we talked about having last year, just a one-classroom addition and another addition out front to handle the new space for administration and smaller instructional. Our architect looked at it and said, gee, it makes more sense to put three classrooms out front and repurpose two existing classrooms into those small instructional spaces. Localize all your construction in one area instead of trying to do two construction spots at the same time. It um, simplifies our access. We're gonna have a real logistical problem about how do we maintain access into this building? Because these additions have to start in April because of our schedule. How do we maintain access here if we've got a construction site on? So that simplifies that. Also, it avoids the stigmatization. If you have all of your special ed spaces out front in this area here, those kids are outside of the classroom area of the building. They're sort of going off into that wing for their services. This way, they're out, you know, all those services are provided out in the, in the general school community. So the uh, what we're doing in here for our vestibule, um, initially, we've scheduled to put a, a glass door in here where people would come into the office and then go out this way. But we're gonna change that and actually put an alcove with a sliding customer window type situation. Exactly. With this being our security buzzer door here and some, you know, good windows and good visuals so that our office staff can control who comes in and out. Our teacher's room, we're going to enlarge that. Currently, our guidance office is in here. We're gonna take that out and enlarge the teacher's room. Teacher's room right now is the same size it was when they built the original nineteen seventy-two building with five classrooms and twenty-some odd employees. We have fifty-some odd employees now. So we're gonna expand the teacher's room, make the teacher's toilet ADA accessible, make the nurse's toilet ADA accessible. Currently, it's just a toilet and a closet. So we're gonna do some renovation there as well. And then, we're gonna take this classroom and break it up into small spaces. We'll have str- the small instructional spaces, school psychologist, guidance, our reading room and resource room. We're renovating toilets up here from the nineteen ninety-eight addition, as well as toilets down below in the community center. We're gonna take this classroom, we'll have some storage, timeout space. Our behavior interventionist, who's currently in this storage closet, there's two kids and three adults that are in that little room. And we're expanding their space. Speech will go in here and our O T P T will be in here. O T P T is currently in the teacher's workroom. Teacher's workroom's currently in a storage closet. So we're gonna recapture those spaces. Same over here. We're gonna recapture our conference room, recapture our storage closet, which is currently a timeout closet. By having these additional spaces, we can come back and grab those spaces that we've lost over the years that has, had to find places to shoot one. Of course, the boiler, we'll be redoing the boiler as well. Um, one other thing is the code required us to add uh, another toilet fixture based on the size of the building. Rather than trying to expand any of our existing toilet rooms, we put a couple of single occupant toilet rooms out in the addition that can be used by either staff or students.
Will save a long walk.
Yep, and, and right now, there's only a single teacher's toilet room down here. So at certain times of the day, that's a pretty popular space. So this, this will uh, allow staff to have access to toilet areas up there. So that's our, our general plan. We do have to reroute the fire road, as you can see, to go out around. It's gonna bite into the playground a little bit. Currently, the playground does this. We're gonna have to reposition some playground equipment. We're gonna be doing that with the volunteers, so that won't be in the project. And I think we came to speak to you a while ago about, good evening, and talking about with Jeff Crosby about potentially rebuilding this parking lot out back as well. And we, we can talk about that later.
Now, when was your last addition done?
Two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one.
When we went, when we brought in half-day kindergarten.
Single room?
Yes, we put one room on out here. And that was so that we could have thirteen classrooms, two per grade, one through six, and one classroom for the two half-day kindergarten classes. And that's currently over here. If we add the three rooms, we'll then have two kindergarten, two first grade, two second grade, which is great because all the grades are, are near each other for collaboration. Two third grade, two fourth grade, two fifth and two sixth. So they're all, it, it makes a much better layout.
And when was the last time you guys did a, you guys did a major work on the existing boiler at one time, right?
Um, we did some repiping.
Yeah.
In the boiler room in two thousand and six. So some of the things that are included, Clem has hit on some of these. So some of the things that are included, Clem has hit on some of these things. We have our three classroom addition, we repurposed two classrooms, our infrastructure improvements. Clem talked about a roofing siding, windows, boiler, domestic hot water system. In the lower level, the gym, the kitchen, and the toilets, there's three HV units that are 1988 vintage, 30 years old. We're going to replace all three of those systems. Those are the last three of the really old systems that we didn't get to when we did that multi-phase project in 2004, '05, and '06. Some of those, we still have some of the old duckboard, duckwork, like in the kitchen, and we just got to get that stuff out.
So the '04, '05, and '06 took care of the duckwork in the older section, the 72 section?
Right. Everything, all of it took, not this wing, but all of this was done in 2000, 2004 was here, 2005, we did the library, 2006, we did this, plus we did baseboard radiation and some rework of our.
That's all done and won't have to be renovated?
Correct. As part of our project, though, the HV unit that's above in the attic here, which we tried to upgrade to handle the additional classroom in 2001, has been giving us problems ever since. It was designed as a 3,000 CFM unit. We tried to up it to 4,000 CFM. We've had motor failures, motor mount failures.
Pushing it too much.
We never, it's, you know, 10 pounds into a 5-pound bag. So it's always been a problem. It's been problematic. We're going to take that out. Now, it's 20 years old. And so as we build this addition, we'll have a new mechanical platform with a new unit that'll handle the solar. It'll be an energy recovery ventilator, so it'll be energy efficient. That's another thing with that existing unit, it's energy wheel that the air, your outgoing air passes through this wheel or collects the heat and transfers it to the incoming air. We're only getting about 50% efficiency out of that.
Should be up at 70.
I'm sorry?
Should be up 70, I would hope.
Yeah, yeah. So another reason to get rid of that unit. And we talked about our security upgrades in here. So after we were done with our design phase, we had a public forum back in October, and then we went out to bid in November. Our construction manager has gotten multiple bids from subcontractors and material suppliers for all the bits and pieces. We got together in December and early January, and together with the design team and the construction manager, we selected the bids and built our budget. We've added to that budget our construction manager's fee of 3.75%, and we have a contingency of 6%. The construction manager was comfortable at 5%, we should go at 6%.
Just created the issue.
A lot of renovation stuff here. So we've come up with a total guaranteed maximum price, GMP, of 2.13 million. And I got to let you know, that's subject to change. We're still working on a few minor tweaks with our scope of work that may affect that number a little bit by the time we get to next Wednesday meeting. Next Wednesday, we'll have the contractual GMP set. And then I want to go through this handout, the next one, to talk about what our funding strategy is and what our cost breakdown is. So this is in kind of four boxes here. We've got the column on the left is what is the cost to design and construct. The column on the right is how we fund it. Top of the page is what's happening in fiscal year 2017-18. It's this current fiscal year, and what's going to happen in the next fiscal year. So in this current fiscal year, we've done our design phase, $92,000. Remember, I said the voters approved $100,000, up to $100,000. Looks like we're only going to spend $92,000 out of capital reserve. And the funding for that comes out of capital reserve.
The CM fee was just for his bidding process?
I'm sorry?
The CM fee, it was for his bidding?
It's, it's for bidding and construction. That's his fee right through construction. So if the project passes, we'll have a contract signed. He's contractually required to construct this project that we have fully defined for that guaranteed maximum price and no more. And 100% of any savings will come back to the district. So in the fiscal year 2018-19, looking at the cost for construction, we've got our construction costs, the 1.9 million is, is the bid prices. We have the CM fee, and then we have our contingency to come up with that guaranteed maximum price. To that, we'll be adding some expenses that we, the district, will need to spend for. We'll have the architect and engineer doing some construction administration work, reviewing submittals, inspecting work, approving payments, all that kind of stuff. We'll have some testing services. We'll have to get a couple of eight-foot by 40-foot containers to store some of our contents over the summer, so we can empty the building out to do our work. Duck cleaning in the community center, those ducks, 30 years old, I don't think they've ever been cleaned or touched. We're going to clean them, the ones that are going to remain. Some furniture and equipment, and then we always need to hire legal bond counsel whenever we have a bond. So that brings our total project up to just under 2.2 million. How do we fund it? We're going to take $306,000 out of capital reserve to reduce the amount of the bond. We're going to take $120,000 out of capital reserve for our contingency. We always want to make sure we borrow, excuse me, we use our capital reserve money for contingency, so that if we don't need it, it stays in capital reserve to be used for future projects. You never want to borrow money for a contingency.
How much is left in your capital?
We're going to get that in two pages, real quick. So total 427 coming out of capital reserve, and the balance would be a bond. Now, we are aware that there is a public school infrastructure fund out there for the state. The state has surplus money in last year's fiscal year, which they have decided that after they filled up the rainy day fund, that the balance would go towards certain expenses for school construction. One of those expenses would be improving security. So we're in the process of bidding, we're not bidding out, but we're itemizing the cost for all of our security improvements here in front entry. And it's more than just a window. That's a structural wall, which means we have to come along and reinforce this wall further down and, and do a bunch of other stuff. We moved the wall, we need carpet, we need ceilings, we need paint, a lot of stuff going in there. We're expecting to get 80% of that funded through this term. So, I haven't got a number in there yet, but whatever that number is, we're going to use that to reduce our bond. But right now, we're assuming, you know, a full bond, no grant fund in this calculation. So on the next page is our debt schedules. We're looking at a 10-year bond, seems to make the most sense when you balance the cost per year versus the amount of interest you pay. It would have cost less to go to a five-year bond, but our annual capital budget would have skyrocketed. Like we think a 10-year bond is a good balance. Then on the last page, this is, Dave, to get to your question, how, this is through to our capital reserve fund, and what does our capital budgets look like? So last year was 2017-18 at Calum. We put $240,000 into our capital reserve. We also transferred $32,000 from our legal fund into capital reserve last year.
And although that was raised by taxes?
The, the transfer was not. That was a capital reserve. We took it out of one and put it into this one. But the $240 was raised by tax, 79 cents on our tax rate. We're predicting we're going to withdraw the $92,000 for the design phase services I talked about on page one in this current fiscal year, which will leave us a balance of $260,000. This March, we're looking to put another $240,000 as our capital budget, but we'll be spending $25, $26,000 of that for interest for the first year on the bond, and $214, we're going to capital reserve. And there, we withdraw the $427 we talked about, which will bring us down to just about $50,000 as a balance in our capital reserve. That assumes that really bad things happen. We spend all of our contingency, we get no grant funding. There's no other savings anywhere. I mean, that's worst-case scenario. My, my goal is, I'm hoping we have at least half of our contingency, maybe three-quarters of our contingency unspent, which would allow that balance at the end of this year to be a lot higher than what we're shown.
If we have about $120,000 anywhere.
Right, right. So we're looking at a capital budget, planning on a capital budget dropping down to $230,000 for years going forward, which would cover our bond payments in that upper row there, as well as allow us to dribble some money back into capital reserve every year to, to fill that capital reserve fund up.
That's the beauty of that, you're keeping the, the tax rate essentially the same, because you, you're not, you've already made the big hit already.
Right. We got on the bus last year.
Right.
Now, do we drive or do we sit here and idle? That's really the question. But you're right, that's our capital budget is going to be steady, predictable, no changes in our tax rate year to year with this plan. So somewhere around year five or year six, we'll hire onsite, in-site, to come out and look at our facility again, to see what other items are coming up on the horizon. So we're always looking ahead. And after year five or six, depending on what we see coming up in year 12, 15, 20, we may make some adjustments at that time.
Or add it to the end.
Right. So we're always looking, we'll always be looking ahead and planning to avoid the spikes in our capital budget that we've, we've had over the years.
Which is what we're trying to do on the town, as well with our vehicles and our buildings.
Yep, exactly. It's the same process, same process. And I think the voters will benefit from having this kind of plan in place. So that's just a real quick summary, what's in the project, what's going on, how we think we'll pay for it. And any particular questions?
I really think we need to emphasize the fact that the tax rate, as it extends right now, should remain relatively flat for the next, for, for the life of the bond, allowing nothing to happen on the way.
Right, for our capital project. Obviously, operating budgets fluctuate.
That's separate from the operating.
Right, just, I'm talking about capital.
For capital, we can plan for capital.
The pain was actually started this year.
Right.
And, and that's, that's an important point to make, is, you know, a lot of people think about, oh, I'm going to vote for a bond, my taxes are going up.
Right.
In reality, they've already gone up.
Right, right.
And then it shouldn't be going up anymore.
Right.
And that, I think, is a selling point we need to keep in mind.
So this capital reserve deposit is the balance left over all those years?
Yeah, yeah.
And it grows, and it grows.
Slowly grow.
And under today's calculations, it's about 80 cents?
79 cents.
For this particular warrant, this bond warrant?
Right. $240,000 would be 79 cents.
Which was 73.
Exactly the same as last year. And then next year, we'll drop a little.
I have a couple of questions to be answered.
Sure, yeah.
Since we've been working together as a team.
You bet.
Were you able to take advantage of the waiver of the bond cost? Remember, they had promoted some kind of application where if you submitted your bond request, you could get the waiver of fees?
So the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank no longer charges fees.
Oh, okay, so it was just.
On the bonds, right, for everybody.
Okay.
Yeah. So that was great, because it used to be, you know, five or 6,000 just for their fees.
And then another thing, where the bathroom's going to be so far at that end of the building?
Up here?
Where's the septic located in the site? They will let the septic be able to?
Yes.
Work with?
Yes. So we've, Mark Antonia is our civil engineer, and he's done our septic system calculations. In our pump room, we have a meter that measures what our actual water flow is coming out of the well. So we can look at what our actual flow is compared to our current size of the building and see if our systems are, have the adequate capacity. As opposed to using the State Department of Environmental Services, their chart that says you need 15 gallons per day per kid or something like that, which means you need...
You see, you look at your use.
We look at our actual use, what we're actually putting in the ground, and our systems are adequate. So what we have is, we actually have two septic systems. Out here, there's the original 1972 system with a couple of septic tanks, and it comes out of this corner of the building. And then we have the one that was put in in 1989 is back here by the playground. And there's a grease trap and a tank, a couple of tanks out here that head that way. We, when we built this addition for these toilets and these sinks, we tied them together, and we have a line that goes underground and ties into this line out here. We're going to tie into that right here.
Okay.
So we're going to hook right in that same line, and off we go. Very short, very, very quick connection there. We also, by the way, I don't know if you're aware of this, but we handle the septic for the fire department, too. They have, they have a pump, a septic tank out back here, and now a pump chamber, and there's a force line that comes down, goes right underneath this addition, and ties into that gravity line and goes into our systems.
So that would be the fire and police, then?
Fire and police, yeah.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, well, it goes down, we, we take your crap all the time.
Jeff, any questions?
No, I think the 10-year bond interest is pretty reasonable for that side of the addition.
So.
We're looking at one, one total year.
Yeah.
Used up for interest, which isn't huge over 12 years.
Yep. And, and so a 10-year bond, actually, as you may know, kind of spills into 11 fiscal years, because we have to make our first interest payment in 2018-19. Our first principal payment doesn't happen until August of the following year, so it jumps into that 11th year again. Last July, June, last June of the bond sale, the 10-year rate was 1.76%. January, they have a bond sale on January 10, it's up to 2.16%.
And straight's going up.
And they're going up. We're, we're assuming 2.5%. The bond bank says that's a good estimate right now, fairly conservative. But you all know, you can see what our economy's doing, what the Fed is looking to do for jumping rates in the next year.
And if we hold off, it's not going to help us.
We could easily be another point higher in a year. And another point higher is another $100,000 in interest on this line, plus another $100,000 in, in inflation in the construction industry if we wait another year to do all this.
Yeah, it's a third more.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's just a lot more money to hold off. So we're, we're hoping the public will recognize that we've, we've got some reasonable, practical solutions to our needs. We've got a good way to fund it. We're already there as far as our tax rate goes. And if we hold off and, and wait and hope for, you know, better times ahead, we're going to be paying more.
I like that they're doing all one addition in the back and not the two dual additions.
Yeah.
And I think it would have made the front of the building look a lot different as well.
It would, yeah. It would. Okay.
So that was your, was your rendition there?
It was. So it was my thought, well, gee, let's just put a little plunk out here, let's fill in this corner with the one addition.
Yeah, recall that.
Yeah. Which is why I'm an engineer, not an architect.
Well, thank you for coming. What do you want, what can we do there?
Nothing, just if, as you're talking to folks in the community, now, maybe a better understanding of what we're doing, what's going on, so.
I think, I think I understand it a lot better. And, you know, a lot of people that I've talked to thought you guys were redoing the entire system, the heating system that you'd already put substantial amount of money in.
Yeah, no.
Not knowing. And this helped break it down a lot for me, and it's, it's much easier to look at with your, your new drawing.
Yeah. Good. That was our goal, is just bring it to speed and allow you to come right to us directly if you have any questions. And you can, obviously, if you, if you talk to anybody and they have questions, feel free to have them contact Clem.
Yeah.
It doesn't take long to walk through the school and see that they're working in the closets and the halls and in the areas they probably shouldn't be.
Yeah, I mean, our storage closets, they don't have the vent, they don't have air coming in like they're supposed to have. They've...
Or if they had an emergency in there and something got jammed up, because some of those hallows, hallways narrow up as you're coming into that wing right there.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So next Wednesday, 6 o'clock in that little center.
It'll be here in the town hall. Yeah. And if too many people show up, we'll move to the...
What's the actual title of the meeting calling it?
This is the bond hearing.
Bond hearing, okay.
Right. And then we'll have our budget hearing, media following, and then a regular one before.
But your budget's flat.
Yeah, no. And it's primarily tuition. So many more kids coming in.
Do you feel there's going to be any exits of students with the fact that you're repaying for, at the school systems to educate our kids, any exit of students you predicted?
In other words, if they change the Senate Bill 193?
Yes.
I don't know. I don't think so.
We have, we have a good school system.
We do. And that's why we're growing, and everybody else around us isn't. We're growing. And if we had kids who exited that were currently paying tuition at middle high school, they decide to take the money and go to Trinity.
Right.
For Brady, you know, they get, what, $30, $36, $3800 for their kid. We lose $36, $3800 in revenue, but we're paying $12,000 for tuition. So any of them who leave, we make out.
Unless they're already going there.
If they're already going there, then there's no change to us, because we're not getting any funding for them anyways.
Are there anything affecting with the Bo, anything with the power plant affecting for our kids?
Nope. Nope. They, they have some tough decisions to make over there.
So we have 10, 10 years locked up there.
Right. And we're in year...
We, we do get asked about that, by the way.
That would be in our tuition based on their budget.
Right. But the thing is, every, every time you hear about Bo and the power station, how's it, you know, we have the connection with Bo, and people are asking us, how's it affect our education?
So our tuition is based on what they call the area school expense, expenses that the Bo School District has to run the middle school and the high school, actually, half of the middle school, grades seven and eight. And so those are the two area schools. And they break out all the costs for those two bits and pieces and divide it by the number of kids, Bo kids and Dunbar kids, and we pay our share.
So just like us, that town section is separate, so it's not going to affect our school section at all.
Right. What, what may happen is, is the Bo voters may put more pressure to keep costs down at the school district, which in turn would keep our tuition rates down. So it's up to them. They make the decisions. We're not involved in that at all. But that, that to me is what I see as being perhaps a fallout of that, is that there may be more pressure to hold expenses and not expand much.
Well, with that overvaluing of the plant and then possibility of that plant closing... Well, with that overvaluing of the plant and then possibility of that plant closing someday, it'll change our town tax rate.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Did I say we'll see you next week?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, folks. Okay. We're gonna continue on, this time we'll move back to the agenda. Can you talk about the budget now, a little bit, Lee? And I'm gonna let you take the full ear and help us walk us through this.
Okay. All right, I'll go with the first sheet, that is the summary sheet at the very bottom of your operating budget. So you had, this is the full report, but this is just the last page, just to get everything on one sheet.
Nice and bold enough like we like.
Yeah, so Dave, you asked me on, during the meeting of November eleventh, I believe, the board made a motion to, the increase for two thousand eighteen's proposed budget was one hundred and twenty-six nine fifty-eight over two thousand seventeen. The actual expenditure from two thousand seventeen's budget, we have an excess now that I've updated it, eighty-seven thousand nine hundred one dollars.
Which was ninety-eight at the time.
At the time, correct. Then, the other piece to this is that the projected revenues for two thousand seventeen came in at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars higher than what we had anticipated. So the combination of the actual eighty-seven one oh nine, which is the excess budget that's lapsing into the general fund, along with the true excess of revenues that we didn't anticipate, but we have it because we...
Which was one sixteen, right?
One sixteen now, because it was at one twenty, and then I revised some numbers. So we have a total excess lapsing to the general fund between the budget and revenues of two hundred and four thousand one twenty-five. And then you asked me to calculate what it would cost for us to have a flat operating budget on the warrant, or, excuse me, on the tax rate level. And what I had to do was, I found that because we had a decrease for the proposed budget for two thousand eighteen of forty-three thousand five eighty-eight, because we're being a little bit more conservative...
So that night, we forgot to look at that forty-three thousand dollars.
Correct, the difference, yeah.
Because that forty-three thousand is the change, because if you take the forty-three thousand plus the subtraction of ten or eleven thousand on the excess...
Yeah, it's thirty-nine and change, so...
So that's why there's such a fire spread, because we didn't look at that forty-three thousand dollars that night.
Correct, so as it stands right now, applying the one hundred and twenty-six nine fifty-eight from that two hundred and four dollars that we know we have excess of, we will have a, an estimated tax rate of three dollars and eighty-six cents for the operating budget with two thousand seventeen's being at three dollars and seventy-four cents. So that's a twelve cent increase over two thousand seventeen, just with the surplus that you voted on on November eleventh.
Right.
And then if you, as you asked me to do, calculate the, using the more surplus to keep the budget at a flat tax rate, you'd have to use a hundred and sixty-five thousand of that two oh four to keep our budget tax rate at a flat, three dollars and seventy-four cents.
And that would leave us a balance of, what, forty?
Yeah.
Forty-five?
Two oh four minus five, thirty-nine thousand.
Thirty-nine thousand. That we would apply towards our rainy day fund.
Correct, and going to that sheet, if you look at the two that are stapled together, one that says it's audits, financial, year-end auditing, and then the last page of the tax rate setting, when you tap it, they came, they escaped from two different documents, we had a mix of... It's the one that's, has little hole punches, yep, that's it. So that first sheet right there, that is what we were presented with, and it's in the section that the auditor pointed out to us that in two thousand fifteen, December thirty-first, we actually had true balance of surplus of twenty-six thousand dollars and change because he had into, we had, we're not calculating our non-lapsing warrants in with the total. In the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, that true balance jumped up to two hundred and sixty-eight thousand three, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. So there was a substantial increase, which the auditor said was a plus for us. But what the, the second page, what the DRA looks at, is that total retainage. Part of the auditor's comments was that we have a hundred and ninety-one thousand and change in warrants that are voted on and passed that have a non-lapsing period. So if you did, if you subtract that hundred and ninety-one thousand for any warrant that could potentially come to fruition and be spent, we really truly only have two hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars.
And not the one hundred and sixty.
But again, the DRA uses the total amount, they don't look at the lapsing or non-lapsing.
Now, I'm looking, if we take our thirty-nine thousand dollars, put it towards the rainy day fund, that gives us a point oh eight four seven, which is point eight five. Added to that, plus a twelve, you know, it's five point one two, so we're gonna be looking at about a six percent total at that point, Bob and Mike. Okay, so we've brought it up still, and we've kept our tax rate flat, because I know that, that night that we made this vote here with the hundred and twenty-six thousand, we knew this number of ninety-eight thousand was gonna come down by, we were estimating three or four, five thousand dollars at the time.
Yeah.
And it kinda gave lean, you know, the authority that if that went down, we could change this one twenty-six by that amount. What we were forgetting about is the forty-three thousand dollars on the second page.
The revenues.
But I'm of the liking that if we keep that tax rate flat and zero, using the one sixty-five this year, and still increasing our rainy day fund by...
Thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah, thirty-nine thousand, which is, you know, almost another point right there, it's point eight five.
No, I understand where you're going, but you have to remember that this coming year, you're gonna have unanticipated revenues coming in.
Higher.
That you can, that may be more than what we figured it's gonna be, because that's how we got to where we are now, is we got more money than we anticipated. And you could make that adjustment before the next budget period, correct?
At tax rate setting.
Exactly.
Correct.
So that, you know, just in case you decided you wanted to put a little more, because we're gonna find out what happens with the warrant articles and everything. So I, I think trying to adjust it right now to get that number down flat...
I wanna be able to go to the voters at our town meeting and be able to tell them that, with our members here, that we've worked out that we're keeping that at a zero...
The operating budget at, at a flat.
operating budget at zero increase. So the only thing they're voting on there that night are the warrant articles. They vote them in, it's gonna, the dollar and cents are right there, seven cents, six cents. Every time they vote one in, they're gonna know they're adding, I think last week you added a month that was eighty cents to the bottom line.
I do wanna point out though, that this estimated tax rate increase is based on two thousand seventeen's values.
Right, and so what I'm saying is, looking at two thousand seventeen values, we know we were conservative on our revenues. So I know that we're gonna look real good next year when those revenues come in, and the tax rate with the new houses that aren't online yet, the ones that we accepted the current use penalty for, will be added to our tax base, so in both of those avenues, we're gonna, we're gonna come out with some positive money. So I think that we can go into that, adding that smaller amount to the capital reserve real skinny, because we're gonna have enough money to work with next year.
The assessing year is April first to March thirty-first, so it's already basically cut off. When the assessor comes in in March, he will review our permits from April first last year to current. And all of those that were in a current use penalty or, you know, collection that period, now will have the land, full land value and a structure on that property.
Yeah, that's a tax credit.
And we have at least eleven homes in that twelve-month period, because it's not including the ones moving forward.
So with that full tax rate, plus, you know, we were very conservative on our revenues, so I think we're gonna be sitting real well this coming year. Thing is, if we take the full one hundred and sixty-five K, bring it down to flat, and take it out of unassigned fund balance, so it's two hundred and sixty-eight K minus the one sixty-five, leaves us only with a hundred and three K.
No, 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 you're not touching that two sixty-five.
You're not touching this balance, that's already in...
This is all... This is all extra.
We're using these ones down here, Mike, which are revenues, right, excess budget.
Two oh four.
Yeah, which we have from this year, excess budget of eighty-seven.
So we're adding, we'd be adding thirty-nine K to that two sixty-eight.
That's right.
Correct.
Which realistically, when you look at their numbers, Mike, they're using the whole amount of four sixty. So we're taking the four sixty, adding thirty-nine thousand, so we basically have six percent.
Oh, the thing is, I, I take that with a grain of salt, because it does have the warrants in there, there are the warrants which are, we've already voted on. The number we're really gonna look at is, is two sixty-eight K.
Right, but they want us to be at five percent with those warrants included. We're above the five percent, and we're actually gonna be, when we put the forty, forty, was it forty-nine thousand? No, thirty-nine thousand, towards that, we'll have a total of six percent mark down.
Yeah, or closer, and three hundred K, fully uncommitted. Bob, you see that? In other words, we'd have the two sixty-eight K, and add the thirty-nine K, that'd be almost three hundred thousand. It's still more than ten ti, eleven times what we started the year off in last year.
Unassigned.
Unassigned.
And we've kept that at a zero budget, which is what we tried to do at that earlier meeting by looking at those numbers. The only thing we did a mistake at that earlier meeting is we missed the forty-three thousand.
Correct, yeah.
We knew the other number's gonna drop slightly.
Right, right.
So the question on the table is, do we wanna use the full amount to fund the, the amount necessary, bringing that necessary flat?
And I'm, I'm in the thought that we should, because we're coming into this year real well, but with the revenues, we kept very conservative. And we got eleven more houses that we know of coming onto that tax schedule that we didn't prepare for in two thousand seventeen.
As long as we don't have to give it back to the utility companies, then we're, we'll be looking really good.
Keep paying our lawyer, so we don't have to. So I, you know, I can't see, we're still increasing it, we're already at the five percent they want us to be at in one year. We're gonna be at six percent, and we're very conservative when we did our numbers for this coming year, so... Bob, your thoughts?
Well, I don't have a problem, I just, would've been nice to adjust at one time next year, even though it showed a twelve percent increase, it's not, twelve percent increase, it's not a huge, but it does make a difference to me.
Okay.
My main concern was having, I think what they're looking for is like, five percent was good, eight percent was supposed to be the number, I think that...
Oh, by the DRA?
Is what they like to see that.
Well, it's on this sheet right here, based on our budget, and I think, I wanna say it's that enterprise budget for everything, general operating expenses, eight million nine ninety-four.
Okay, great.
Five percent would be four hundred and forty-nine thousand, we currently have four hundred and sixty.
And then I had another thirty on top, thirty-nine on top of that, bringing up almost five hundred thousand.
Yeah, which brings us up, that thirty-nine brings us up point eight five, so if you had point eight five to one two, we're gonna be at about six percent now.
Yeah.
So, you know, being at six percent, we're in the, we're in the safe zone, all in one year.
I understand, yeah.
And this next year, with our added revenue, Bob, we're gonna put that in a much safer zone at what I'd been at, and we're gonna have additional money to put toward our town buildings.
I, you know, I don't have a problem either way.
But I'm glad we, we were able to get all these numbers together to square it away, because two weeks ago, we were lost. We missed that forty-three thousand.
Yeah.
Yep.
Lee, I don't have this page. Attach something else totally different.
Oh, attach two of the same, is what I did. Okay.
So, you copy that?
Then I think we have a consensus. Bob, I think we have a consensus.
I think last time you made a motion.
Yeah, you do, you do.
I'll make a motion that we apply a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars out of the excess budget from two thousand seventeen towards the operating budget for two thousand eighteen. I'll set up that motion. Further discussion? Already been going, I think, yeah? And that will give our, our increase based on two thousand seventeen tax values of a zero percent increase. Correct. Call it favor?
Aye. So we, and we still, what I like about it, we're still moving approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars back into our strategic reserve.
We should bring that up when we do our tellers to close to six percent.
Right.
Like Bob said, I think seven or eight is what they talked about.
Yeah, they're talking about an eight percent being, you know, the way they like to see everybody at, so I mean...
So if we, if we get it up to that seven or eight percent this year, I think we'll be able to go.
Well, it makes it easier going forward, especially if you use a conservative estimate, if you're unanticipated, and you end up with more.
Yep.
You know, because now you can apply, you've met that eight percent. So, you know, unless things change dramatically, it'll fluctuate, might drop you down depending on, you know, the values of your six percent, be between six and eight percent, but now you can apply monies to keep in the tax rate low.
Right.
Versus, all of a sudden, you're really nearly doing it, and then finding out you have no money, you know?
Well, right now, we have, it grew from a low of twenty-six thousand to three hundred thousand. All in one year, that's pretty significant, I think I'm...
You're not gonna get up now and make the motion or raise, I don't have a hundred thousand.
Okay, warrants next.
All right. The warrants have been submitted to the Department of Revenue. She has come back with the comments that I have a couple of questions on. So, one thing I noticed, there are no changes to the operating budget. She did recommend that we take away the notes that we have here that say less estimated revenue and offset with unassigned fund balance, net to be raised. It's not necessary to have that, the board before you folks wanted that information, because it makes it easier for the public.
Well, you're gonna change that one twenty-six to one sixty-five.
Correct, yeah.
So what I'd like to do is show like you did at the bottom of that other page where...
The operating budget will be reduced, the tax rate impact will be reduced to three seventy-four. And, but it's up to you, it's not mandatory, she asked that I take off the revenues, the unassigned fund balance, just to list the net budget.
I, I think it brings, I'll make the motion go by, go through quicker, I might.
I think...
Do what? Leave a citation here. That's what she asked.
She is recommending that we take off this, these notes that I put in here, which I think are very helpful for the, for the resident to understand where the budget came from.
The note is fine, but somewhere in this budget, it's gonna show where it's, it's got estimated twenty eighteen tax rate free.
It will be, well, that will be three seventy-four, that will be reduced to three seventy-four.
It'll be this, so we're gonna reference, we're gonna reference these numbers here, right there.
Okay, okay.
So, I mean, it's up to the board, you can leave whatever you want on a warrant.
I think it brings... Do you wanna, do you wanna say that, which, which includes no, no increase from twenty seventeen on there, or?
That would be part of the board's discussion with the public to review the budget and then explain that this, this, what you've done here is basically kept the budget, the operating budget at the same tax rate as the last year.
All right. Okay, continue on.
All right, she had no comments for Article Three, that was the standard, no comments for Article Four, no comments for Article Five, Article Six. There's some of the internal things, they're just basically changing it from either a special warrant or a... They're worded as individual warrants, special warrants, and so she's asked me to move some of the code numbers, the DRA accounts, to a different format, which does nothing with the wording of the article at all.
Now, we had changed the wording on Article Six back two years ago.
We did? Was it here?
Where now it shows Phase Three, but it doesn't show the top code or...
Okay.
Remember how we reworded that? In fact, Leo, I think, gave us some of the correct wording, what was it, final code? On Grapevine Road.
Okay, I may have missed that.
See if the town will vote to raise or lower the sum of a hundred thousand to... Says pay a section of Grapevine, to do a top coat on a section of Grapevine Road, Phase Three.
Instead of saying top coat, you wanted the final codes if you wanted to say...
Oh, yeah, final, final. Final code is how you wanna word that one.
Do a final coat.
Yeah, of paving on a section of Grapevine Road.
Of paving.
Brings it to finale.
Yeah. Remember we talked about that?
Final quote of paving on a section, okay. I'll correct that one.
What did you put before final coat to?
To, um.
Complete final coat on a section of. Gotta have some word in there, name, just so it sounds like.
Finish, complete, or?
It should be add a paving, oh, no, add final coat. Let me think of that, about that.
To complete final coat. Of paving on a section.
To add the final coat of paving, to add.
Yeah, to add, I guess.
Add the final coat of paving on a section of Grapevine Road.
Yeah, to add the final coat.
Add the final, yeah, to add the final coat.
Okay, to a section of Grapevine Road.
Yeah.
Yep, perfect.
Brings it to finale.
To add. Complete the paving.
You just cut this one, yeah.
No, if you complete the paving, you've got your final coat.
I know what he wants. I know what we talked about adding final in there last time.
Is that how you want it?
It doesn't, I may.
Add the final coat of paving on a section of Grapevine Road, Phase Three.
It won't be final in ten years.
All right, that's final, that's parentheses, ten year coat.
All right.
Well, it was just.
So, that wording's okay then?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next one was okay, Article Seven, Article Eight, uh, was okay. Articles Nine, she asked me to specify where the money was coming from. Um, I had it more, a more generic wording. She said I need to say where it was coming from. So the sum of twenty four thousand to come from the transfer station capital reserve fund established for this purpose, and three thousand nine eighty three to come from the sale of dumpsters and surplus with no impact on taxes. So that's cleaned up a little bit.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay?
I thought you already worded it like that.
No, it didn't say, it just, um, it wasn't specific to that particular, uh, CRF, and she wanted it to say what it was for. Um, I'm still waiting to get that final number for Article Ten. I did plug in nineteen, but I understand the.
The email this afternoon said seventeen five, I think.
But that was just for the rust mitigation, that still did not include.
Now, the roll-up cover there, is it just rust on that roll-up cover, or is he replacing the whole cover? I was unclear on that.
I thought it was replacing the whole cover system.
I think it's the whole cover system, is what I understand.
Was it ripped and torn or something?
No, I think it's the mechanics of the, the spring is getting worn and rusty, he said. That's how he described it, so. I don't even know if that's necess- I don't know, I'm sure he can still use it as it is, but, um, he'd have to speak on it.
He did get a firm quote today in the email. He, he said to all of us, seventeen five was the, uh.
Yeah, except for no.
That's for the rust mitigation.
Right, but that's only one quote too, before we.
Yeah, which is the same one that.
No, no, I, that he would have to continue to work on.
Right.
But we need a number to work with for the warrant. Maximum price for the warrant.
Right now, so nineteen hundred, nineteen thousand is, essentially gives us like fifteen hundred, um, for the, uh, cover.
Yeah, you would think that we had.
Are you familiar with big equipment and what it costs to repair and replace parts?
That cover is not gonna be done for fifteen hundred.
I was thinking like three, like five K.
Yeah, I thought you said six.
Five, six, yeah. You wanted us to put a, put a place order in there for now, or?
I don't, I, let's, how long do we have to wait?
Our public hearing's next week.
On the same night, yeah.
Mm-hmm. You actually, you want it, you can't change your numbers after your public hearing, unless you have another public hearing.
If you can't give us an accurate number, we wait a year on that, like myself, but. You know, it's part of the department's job to get that number into us in advance, so that these numbers are accurate for the townspeople and not, you know, wait and, and.
If we have to, uh, I say we could put the seventeen five in there for the rust mitigation and, and scratch out, replace cover cable system.
That's why, if he can't get an accurate number on it by next week, that's what we should do, because he can either take it out of his general maintenance fund, like Bob has said in the past, and do that, or wait another year and put a corrected amount in there for the voters, 'cause.
But I think, uh, getting one quote, Bob, um, Mike, is not always the, the top number that you wanna use.
No, nineteen thousand may be a better number than just to be on the same side.
Yeah, well, he should have, uh, by then, he should have a couple of quotes, I'm hoping.
He has one quote right now. I think nineteen, not to exceed nineteen thousand, well, I'm, I'm happy with that. If, if one, first one's coming at seventeen five, I can't see, let's say it goes, we want something coming plus or minus two thousand. That's what I mean.
The only problem with this is that I would have to move to replace the cable cover system.
Correct.
I would have to just ward it so that it's the rust mitigation.
Why don't you circle that, just so you have a note, because I, if we don't have an accurate number on that, I might probably remove that myself.
The whole, the entire thing?
I would.
Either it comes out of his budget, or he waits another year and gets accurate pricing on it.
On the entire item?
On that whole cover.
I mean, it's not right, to be real honest, not like he doesn't have time to make a few phone calls.
Right.
Okay, so you're okay with the nineteen thousand number for the rust mitigation, period?
Period.
And then, unless he comes up with a, a.
You're thinking like it's some budgets that are higher than the seventeen?
Yeah.
I actually thought seventeen sounded a little steep for the work we were doing.
The description sounded reasonable, though. Did you read the, the email?
No.
You, I mean, they're talking about scraping all the rust off, uh, priming.
I did read that part, yeah, I did read that.
But we can see where it comes in. If you want this, I'll meet you halfway, if you want us to leave it at eighteen.
Or leave it at seventeen five, I don't know. If you wanna do that, you have one concrete estimate.
I'm thinking we have a concrete estimate, the other estimates would be to get it to a, a lower number.
Right.
Not a higher number.
I'd leave it at nineteen, and I'd let, the worst-case scenario is, if he's got excess in that, when he does the top, take the rest out of his maintenance budget to get the cover, if he, 'cause if he's waiting this long to get the number, then those are, that's, you know.
We're talking about fifty hundred dollars more, so that's, all right, nineteen, are we in consensus?
I'm okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
It doesn't change the impact.
Let's strike the cable cover system.
Well, I circled it, you, you wanna?
I, I, you know, unless he comes up with a number, you know?
Right.
I take it right out of there.
Unless you take, replace, I would put into repair the cable cover system, so the town people know that it's not a full-funded thing with the cable cover thing.
Uh, we don't have any prices yet, so, uh, we're, we're shooting in the dark here.
Pull it right off.
Yeah.
So rust mitigation it is?
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Eleven?
Uh, eleven, there were no changes. Article Twelve was okay. Um, Article Thirteen, she pointed out that, uh, it's not allowed to have an uncertain sum, so that a second line has to come out furthermore to deposit lapsing funds, I believe. And I, that's the question I have to her, is that how do we get, if we raise an appropriate X amount of dollars, and we only use a portion of it.
You're on twelve, thirteen.
Thirteen. The only way to get the money back into this non-lapsing is to vote it back in, or does, is it an automatic? I guess that's my internal question.
In other words, we'd have to come to the board, we have to vote it in at the end of the year. That's the question, in other words.
Right, right, so I have one, I have a question to her, is what do I do with Article Twelve if there's money left from that article? And how do I get it into the?
I thought we already have some articles that are, keep, revolve in that one.
Oh, yeah, we do, and that's why we're trying to set this up. Those, the money goes right in, but they're, they're a little bit different, because, um, um, we have one for the REIT committee, but they're not a trust fund. Uh, the cemetery had a warrant similar to this, and that's an automatic to go into. So I, they, they don't have to go before the voters. So there might be a phrase that I need here that says that no further action is needed, you know what I mean? And she'll be able to give me that.
You got a week.
There you go.
All right. Now, the estimate of the tax increase.
These sort of warrant articles are problematic, you know, right?
Right from the beginning, yeah, for years now.
So that it's down going. There, there's the increase right there.
But it makes sense that you might wanna know the amount that you're putting in.
Correct, so that, for, for certain, I need to take that in the last line out.
Yeah.
And then the other two are, um, non, uh, they're just the standard reports of agents.
Okay.
Transacting.
Now, now, Lee, we have to, as, and we have to make a vote on, on these warrants. Now, that should be done before the public hearing, or?
Not necessarily. The public hearing's scheduled for seven thirty, so you could review these warrants one by one and vote them at the night of your public hearing. You could come in a half hour early to go through the vote, or you can hold another workshop. I think you're really close at this point with what's there. Um, I'm just trying to get my numbers and my codes to coincide with the Department of Revenue, because when I post this warrant, this piece has to go with it, and this has to match. So the difference that I'm finding out with the, the RA's comments is, I had one item, article here referenced as a special warrant with the, um, the account that I used. She asked me to move it to another one, so it was an individual warrant. So those are just minor things, and this is, um, in the draft stage. But I just wanted to point out that these two pieces are part of.
I'm open to suggestions. So if you wanna vote for it next week before the meeting, come in a half hour early, we can go through them quickly and.
Yeah, 'cause she made that numbers for the cover by then, so you wouldn't have to take it out, and you'd have.
Cleaner of the warrant.
Yeah.
All right, so next, we'll have a mini work session to vote on this on six thirty next week.
Okay.
Is that all right, Lee?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yeah.
Okay. That, that's the, uh, general consensus, though?
Six thirty start, okay.
Right. And we'll start, um.
Did you bring a coffee?
No.
Good, I don't usually drink.
So this could be at six thirty? Six thirty start, yeah.
Since you asked me nicely, I'll think of mine.
Do you need me here for that?
No.
No.
Fine, if you wanted to.
I have, I have forwarded this to you. That's just an FYI, if you.
I saw it online, but.
What did you think about the body of the?
I thought it was fairly good. Did you read this yet?
I did, I already gave, I.
I don't think Dave has.
Dave was, take, take it then.
Kind of summarizes.
It does, really, I didn't wanna miss anything, so.
Lee, good job on the budget, I just wanna say thank you.
One more thing you can bring up?
Okay, referring to budget?
Uh, no, it's just the index of the town clerk.
Okay, yeah.
And I'll be crunching a lot of my numbers in the next few weeks for my reports.
No, you don't want anything of that in here, because it's a secret.
Okay. Hopefully.
You can just say, uh.
Hopefully they can't see the picture through the backside of that copy.
No.
I'll just say, uh, BOS review the.
The litigation, yeah.
That's under a, under a mailbox.
Is the next thing you're talking about?
Yes.
That's the, his way, I can.
I like it.
I just wanted to point something out to the board.
That's okay, I already like it. Except we have to screw up, we have to make sure we make a script typo for stroke normalization in the circle awareness committee.
Go ahead, kick them.
Trying to create some humor, we need some humor.
Well, it's all up to Mike.
I'm here to sound mean, I just, I'm quiet.
I tried.
The humor's all up to Mike, though.
Okay.
One thing down, one of my reports.
I had to keep starting over when you talked in my ear.
Okay, talk about the index for the town report.
Okay, so the board pointed out that you wanted to make sure that I identified other organizations separately from the town organizations. So the index is where I'm going to start with that. Um, other organizations down listed below separately would include, uh, reports like the auditor's report, Central New Hampshire Planning Report, Dunbar Historical Society, Forest Fire Warrants Report, Gardens Club, Mill Foil Treatment Report, Mutual Aid, N NRA, UNH Cooperative, and there might be others that I'm, I'm trying to.
At least just formatally.
Okay, um, my only problem with this format is, um, for example, the Planning Board has required documents that involve the Planning Department, uh, one of which is the CIPs, usually typically posted after the Planning Board report, and then it's followed by the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning. So it groups those three that are tied to each other together within the report, but it identifies it separately. So I'm hoping that the board is understanding that some of these things, like the auditor's report, I always put it the very last report on the town side, is, that's a given. Um, N NRA is, involves the transfer station. He submits his reports, and I attach the N NRA reports aft, immediately after the transfer station, so that, we're not going from page fifteen to page sixty-nine to get information for the two that would involve, uh, the transfer station. So it, it's, it's a given that the ones that have nothing to do, like, uh, Mill Foil Treatment, I don't have a department, I don't have anything, that would go to the end of the, my town side of the report.
So as long as they're at the back and they're labeled under other organizations, I'm fine.
Are you okay with that? Do you understand what I'm trying to do here, is I still need to keep some of these reports together?
Yeah, I do.
Even though they're not other, or, they're not part of the town organizations?
So they're at the rear of the town sections.
Right, but she's saying central planning will not be at the rear, that'll actually be a subsection of the Planning Board.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes common sense.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify it, I just.
Common sense.
Yeah, but I think this works out good, I have or, it's town, school, and other organizations, so.
As an index.
As an index.
Yeah, that makes common sense, because if, if you're reading something about the, the, uh, transfer station, then you gotta go to the back to find out about the, you know.
Yeah, what he's talking about, sometimes he's talking about tonnage.
It should be with it.
The only other, the orphan organizations separately at the end should be those orphaned ones that don't really have a tie to anything else.
Correct, yes, that's what I plan on doing, so, that, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
I will move forward with this setup.
You good with it, Bob?
No. I'm, I'm not sure about the font, though.
I'll add a page, so you can figure it out. But I put those dots, back in the day, they didn't have the dots, and I lose the visual when I.
I understood, I understood.
The dots are very nice.
Yeah.
Okay. With that?
I'm pretty sure that's what she wanted to hear. You know the doc, right?
Okay, that's all I had for the board.
All right, we're gonna continue on with some town business. We did town report discussion. Um, there's a, the email from, uh.
The board had recently asked me for, if the town clerk had submitted her hours, and that.
Yes.
And I provided that template, she was able to use it.
Excellent.
And she submitted her hours for two thousand seventeen on that.
For the, especially for the New Hampshire retirement.
Yeah, that's primarily.
Not that we're scrutinizing hours.
Yeah, and then recently she, or this week, she came into my office and requested reimbursement for that parking ticket.
Okay.
Parking meter ticket.
That one there.
Yeah, I signed them all up. I don't care if we were reimbursed or. Town clerk hours.
We don't, uh, we'd have to take that out of petty cash, 'cause there's no line item for it within the budget.
No.
Three quarters would be fine.
Samantha's Linda?
Linda Lindas, yeah. Report of ours.
Well, consensus?
What?
Three quarters or the petty cash?
It's seventy-five cents refund parking.
Yeah, you all, you all want that.
Okay.
Thank goodness they're not showing up, we'd buy that too.
I think it's, it's a, may set that bad precedent. All right, uh, this is, uh, something for me to sign, this came from Health Trust, this allows you to work off the health portal.
Yes.
Okay.
And I, they, I get one and you get one, so I've already signed mine, I'm just gonna have to sign yours and I'll mail it out.
All right, get the pass out, Bob.
This one here, mailbox, Health Trust Portal Access, it's just, um, authorization to access their website.
Health Trust, what was the last bet you said?
It's, um, authorization to access the website. And mine's the same thing. And mine's the same thing. I'm just gonna put them in the same envelope.
Okay.
They gave separate envelopes, I think it's cheaper to just put, put it in one. Is that that? No, I did not make comments.
Okay, um, we have a non-public tonight, and so I'm gonna, I think, I'm going, going back to public comment first.
What do you wanna hear?
Anything you wanna tell me, sir?
I ran out of, I ate my last piece of Angus in the other.
You did?
Yes.
Legally. Chief, I just stopped down to the Stock Bridge and they moved the equipment onto the, to the south side, they put the steel, they pounded all the steel in and they backfilled, and now they moved over and they're working on the south side.
Wow.
Just in layman's terms, that's what I saw.
I'll have to get down there and look at that.
For the record.
It was this Sunday morning, and they were working on it.
Yeah, they, they were taking advantage of good weather, so.
Yeah, they were working on it.
You should get them for history.
I'm taking pictures, there's a lot more than I'm taking than what I'm posting, so I'll give you everything. Let the public know, for, for the public, uh, on the police blog, um, they're posting pictures of the Stark Bridge construction. Periodic updates, there's some, a little bit of video, and then pounding the sheeting in with the, uh, you know, with their equipment. Just, it's interesting, you know. Well, it's, it's, it's nice that there, there's progress, and things, there is progress being made. Yeah, it's good stuff.
Yeah, it looks quite different there.
And, uh, there is an action item, um, Leo for your committee and Donna, we'd like to have some, a proposal, so some new names for that bridge.
That, it is a wonderful idea, we, we talked about Biasso, but there are just, in redoing the master plan, this is how this history fruition. But when you look at this map, there are just screams of a million different names that you've used, and
Farotten Bridge.
We don't have a lot of things that we can do to promote the history, because we didn't have a river running through it, we didn't have a covered bridge, we didn't have a lot of these attractions. The very small things we can do are name, use historic themes for roads, and we can actually tie that in with curriculum to the school, because as. Well, I know you're talking about naming the bridge, but you also said a list of names for.
No, the, the, no, no, no.
See, I got so excited when you said that, I'm sorry.
Okay, then the list of names.
That's what I'm trying to. Run me down. We're only on the bridge.
Yeah.
It could be the Jeff Cross.
I thought you were sending that way around, but.
Yeah, I know, but it's just the whole concept of being.
But Donna, we did decide that we would like to have those names, but they were more area-specific as the project.
Boy, have we got it.
Yeah, so we, we definitely will.
Actually, I came up with the idea that we, we as a committee could write a piece that the Planning Board could give to people that are potentially, that would explain about the history that this is very important to us.
And we, we do expect that you're gonna be talking to them about this, we're planning on being at the meeting, actually.
Of the planning board?
Yeah.
It's a, a third, third week in paperwork.
Uh, yeah, we, I think our twenty-first or twenty-second?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
But we could actually tie it into a teeth, the birth of a bridge is a good thing that we could use with the school.
You could call it the Jeff Cross Memorial Bridge.
Except somebody.
No, but that would be great. Who is the person that just talked to?
They're gonna call it some.
Somebody at the state level when they were researching the history of the bridge.
Oh, I have the paperwork here.
Could I see it, please?
The report, yeah.
Yeah, I'd love a copy of that.
There is no historical value to the old bridge.
No, there isn't, but there is a report, I understand.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board, uh, selectmen. Dave, I'll go for you first.
Uh, have we heard anything back in reference to the bids for SCORE or?
I have been too straight out busy.
Okay, that's all right.
Um, I did manage to get the, uh, job opening posted.
That was more important anyway, yeah.
It's under Doing Business, and it's now in NHMA.
Which job?
And it'll go in the paper Sunday for a week, plus thirty days on Monday.
This isn't zoning plan?
Zoning plan, yeah.
Any else?
I think we're coming in a lot.
Well, I'm going in the same direction too with SCORE, but not, when we get the steel from Cohen, was that ordered through SCORE Construction?
Yes, it was, so we're not.
Tell him to stop billing SCORE Construction, since you're not having, hearing anything.
They have billed them, and he has said that he's written it off, and he, he said it was such a small amount, and if it weren't the town Dunbarton, they would've had their attorney, um, lean them for that five thousand bucks.
I would like to see it.
It's too bad, because that's the kind of pressure that we need, so that we can move forward, is somebody like where the owed money, and SCORE is the one that's responsible, putting that pressure on them helps us out.
It's additional pressure.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I wonder, can we, can we include it in our, our?
No, I think it's, it's, it's their subcontract, not ours, we work contract and only with SCORE.
Right.
When we look for someone to do that work, they may use that steel.
Yeah.
But that's still SCORE Construction Steel.
Right, no, they haven't baked for it.
Well, yeah, but if he's written them off, without billing them, and I, so I, I, if I were him, I'd continue to bill.
Yeah.
Not just that, if, if we get a new contractor in there to do the job, whether they use that steel or not, I think that it should be part of the project to make sure that Cohen has made whole on efforts he's done on the town of Dunbar, because.
But that can only happen through SCORE, we can't get a settlement to pay Cohen steel.
For that material.
When the contract is through SCORE Construction, that's part.
If it's part of his new contract to.
He'd have to, he'd end up with new steel being made.
Right, right.
You know?
Might be just as easy to make new stuff anyway, you know.
Or look at other types of support structures, which is a bridge request when we get the money, a settlement. Okay, moving on, uh, I'm gonna go to the town minister.
That last one with the job opening was all I had to add.
Okay, Corwin, do you have anything, have we been okay tonight?
I just got one quick question, um, concerning the bridge, right now it's, the name that's off, yeah, Stark Bridge has always been used, can you just change it like that, or do you have to use the name that was the bridge there before?
There's, we can use anything we want, there's no historical value to that bridge.
Okay.
And we own it now.
And it'll be historic value to the name.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's, uh, we aren't owning the bridge, we've already built the bridge, it's city. Okay, all right, I'm gonna go with non-public, I want to thank the public for being here, we're gonna have a short talk, non-public, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.